Great, good evening. It is 6:02 PM on Tuesday, September 18th, and I'm calling the Policy Committee of the Board of Ed to order. Present this evening, we have myself, Heather Raymond, Ray Guarino, Board President Dottie Oden, member Susan Porter, Doris Hoence, Howard Kaufman, and then on the phone, we have Bill Mosher. Mr. Mosher, are you alone?
Yes, I am.
Wonderful. Mr. Mosher continues to participate by phone due to his health. So tonight, we have one, two, three, four, five items, and most of these are, again, things that we need to do for legal changes to make sure that our policies are up to date. So the first item on the agenda is Policy EFDA, Student Meal Charges. And if everybody will call, bring their attentions to the highlighted box on the back of the policy. I spoke with Mr. Donovan, and we had a review last year from the government, and they asked that we make some changes to put, bring our policy fully into compliance. Their corrective action that they asked for was that we change our existing meal charging policy to revise the point in time when delinquent debt is redefined as bad debt. So that's pretty much the changes that are proposed. So we've added, they needed an actual time, not just like in arrears, they needed a significant amount of time. So we've changed paragraph one, two, three, four, five, number two, to say parents will be notified when their student's account goes negative, and then by mail, if their account deficit is two weeks in arrears. And then on May 15th, unpaid students' accounts with delinquent debt may, upon the decision of the superintendent or food services director, be assigned to a collection agency. At the end of June, delinquent debt becomes bad debt. And by making these changes, we will have fulfilled our corrective action plan and be fully in compliance. So, does anyone have any comments, or suggestions, or would like to make a motion regarding this change?
Yeah, I'd make the motion to move this onto the full board for approval.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. I'll second it. Any discussion? No?
Are you ready for the vote, Madam Chair?
Absolutely.
Okay. On the motion to approve changes to Policy EFDA as presented, to full board for approval. Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries, three to zero.
Excellent. We are moving right along. The next item on the agenda is a new proposed policy, and we don't have letters yet, because I simply don't know which one they should be. Ms. Hoence?
Yes, I looked that up. GBAA is Sexual Harassment and Violence for Staff or Employees. So this, I would recommend we do GBAAP, or something, you know, just add a letter. That would be the area.
Usually, we would add a letter to add something. I'm not, my hesitation with that was, JBAA is regarding students, GBAA is regarding staff, and this is about staff's requirement to protect students, and so I'm, I'm not sure. So I'm waiting for a little bit more information.
G is for personnel, is a personnel category.
Okay.
They may be not harassing students, but it's a directive for personnel. So it's the right first initial letter in terms of staff, and, you know, things that they're supposed to do and not do.
Okay. Did you wish to speak to this, Ms. Hoence?
Yes. I wanted also add back the references, just so that people...
I apologize.
The bottom?
I'd given my notes to Tara, and they didn't come back to me.
I have them written down.
Oh, great.
New Hampshire R.S.A. 169-C Child Protection Act.
Yep.
It's referred to in here, but at the bottom, we usually put references in.
And you had the federal law as well.
There was a federal one, 20 U.S.C., and then there's a squiggle sign, 7926 ESEA, Section 8546, prohibition on aiding and abetting sexual abuse.
Thank you.
Which is why we, where we got the title for this policy. And I think it's more or less a common sense policy. I think they had a problem in Bedford, because they didn't really think the whole thing out. It undermined the community trust, and there's no way to backtrack, once you get into that predicament. So this prohibition prevents the superintendent from authorizing anyone to go to a sentencing hearing for a convicted sexual abuser. Also prohibits any personnel records from going to that sentencing hearing and being used. The person has access to her own personnel file, so that shouldn't be a problem. This, they can do it on their own time, because everyone has First Amendment rights, but I think it would give them pause to understand that you can't be an advocate defending against child abuse, and out there defending a convicted abuser, and expect not to confuse parents in the community. So, whereas they do have First Amendment rights, and we can't get in their way, they can do it on their own time, and they will, they will think it through a little bit more seriously. The other thing that I put in here is the Board of Ed members shall not sign a non-disclosure agreement with any employee over an issue which is potentially criminal, including sexual abuse. That stems from similar issues, like there was a teacher from St. Paul's who went to Dairy Field. They knew he had boundary issues. They gave him a reference, there must have been a non-disclosure agreement, and he got passed on to the next school, just like some of the parish priests got passed on to the next district. And the only way we can prevent that is to prevent a non-disclosure agreement from allowing that to happen. So if they want to leave, the very least, no recommendation. And we shouldn't, you know, there's certain things we shouldn't be covering up with a non-disclosure agreement. So that's why I put that one in there.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoence. I happen to agree with you wholeheartedly regarding our obligation, I think, as all adults, to protect our kids, and to not cover things up when they happen. And as I was researching what you had sent me, the first, one, two, three, four, five paragraphs are, for the most part, very consistent with the federal law. I have a couple quibbles with sentences, but for the most part, I have no problem with this. So the only proposal that I would have for changes would be to limit the language to what the policy is, instead of the, and strike the couple of sentences that explain why. Because to me, it's so obvious, and I know Bedford had that problem, but I hope we don't. So like mandatory, the second sentence in the first paragraph, mandatory reporters are expected to protect the safety and well-being of students, not their abusers. I would either strike the whole sentence, or the "not their abusers" part. On the second paragraph, again, the second...
Can I comment to that first one?
Let me get the rest of it out, and then certainly.
Okay, fine.
In the second paragraph, I would also strike that this is especially harmful, as it revictimizes the victim. I agree that that is true, I just don't think that it ought to be in the policy.
Okay. I understand what you're, what you're saying. It's not the policy that prohibition, but I just think that some people need to understand it, whether it's a teacher reading this, or a parent teaching, or reading it.
The why?
It sort of gives the mission, the purpose, and I just don't want them to misunderstand why we're doing it. And I thought, like, a lot of times, we have a policy, we put purpose up there. So these are like mission or purpose, just so there's no confusion, that's why I put it in, and stemming back to the situation that we're, you know, watching unfold.
Okay. Agreed. Did anyone on the committee want to make a comment? And then I'll get...
I made a comment.
Go ahead, you first, yep.
Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
All right. We were just discussing the second paragraph, right?
Mm-hmm.
And the second sentence.
Yes.
You want to strike that?
I do. But...
You know, the reason why we can't, can't strike it, because the gist of the whole thing is the first sentence, and I think that covers a whole multitude of what it is that is very apparent here. So I don't believe that we need that second sentence.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Did you have a feeling about the second sentence of the first paragraph, that starts mandatory reporters? That's the other one I proposed striking.
I have no, no problem with it. If you want to leave it in, it's fine, if you want to take it out, this...
Okay.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick, you had wanted to comment? I just wanted to agree with the Chair that I don't think that the second sentence in the first paragraph is needed. It's very clear that there are mandated reporters, and it's mandatory to report. So the second sentence is somewhat redundant, so I don't know if it's really necessary. But also, in the second paragraph, I agree with what Mr. Mosher said. The first sentence is the important sentence, and the second two sentences, although are true, I'm not sure they're relevant to the policy and the intent of the policy, which is to not provide references for people that have been convicted of this crime.
Mr. Guarino, did you have your hand up?
Yes, I did. Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree that we do need to have a policy, and I agree with your assessment that the, in the first paragraph, we don't really need that second sentence, and in the second paragraph, we don't need the last two sentences. But I, I was just wondering about the, I guess, did you write this, Ms. Hoence?
Ms. Hoence, are you willing to...
Sure, sure, I didn't want to just speak. Yes, I wrote it, watching everything unfold. But I'd also suggest, maybe as we could take those sentences, put them at the top and call them purpose? And then it wouldn't be confusing to what you're instructing in the policy. I just don't want people to be confused as our, you know, we're telling them they can't do this, and I just like to tell people why, because some people don't understand it at first blush. They just, they need an explanation, and then, oh, it sinks in. So either we leave it crossed out, in place, so the full board can, you know, review it in place, or just move it to the top and call it purpose. One little paragraph with those struck sentences, that would accomplish what I was hoping to accomplish, preventing confusion.
Thank you.
I just want to continue. I just wanted to find the origins of where it came from, that's all.
If you'll allow me, Mr. Guarino, I did read the law that had gotten struck here from references, which was a complete accident. The federal law prohibit, the prohibition of aiding and abetting sexual abuse, and much of this language is almost identical to the federal law.
Okay, yeah, that's what I'm looking for. I always like to look for a history of things, because it tells me, you know, often how things come about, and how we can improve them. But as I was saying, I don't think we need the first, the second sentence in the first paragraph, I don't think we need the, you know, the, keep it simpler, the better, you know? And I was just wondering about the one, two, three, fourth, the fourth paragraph there, that sentence, defendants have access to the personal records and can readily obtain them for their defense without any additional assistance from the district. I mean, does, isn't the district the one who keeps these personnel records? Maybe Ms. Fitzpatrick can answer that?
Yes, we do, but the, they have a legal right to have access to their personnel files.
So doesn't, isn't that, I mean, they have to, the district has to release them, so they have, you can't say that, any addition, it's kind of confusing, any additional assistance from the district? This, defendants have access to their personal records, maybe we could add "from the district", okay? Maybe that's what we need.
Where? I'm sorry, I've lost you.
On the one, two, three, four, the fourth thing, "from the district", okay?
Can readily obtain them from their district.
For their defense.
Oh.
Okay. And can readily obtain them for defense. It says, "without any additional assistance from the district", so I, yeah, I'm not...
You're correct that technically, they have to go into HR to get their personnel records.
Right.
So they would need assistance from the district to give them their personnel records. So I understand what you're saying.
Right. So are we barring, I mean, someone may make the case, we're barring them from their own personal records.
Mrs. Hoence?
Okay, the, what happened in Bedford was the person who wrote letters, and the one that spoke, she had personnel records, and she was reading from the personnel records her previous evaluations, saying she was the best guidance counselor of the six we have, and start reading her previous evaluations, word from word, from the personnel report. So that's why, not only do we not want to authorize them to go and speak for the district, but we don't want them taking the records and using them, because the district has access to them. It just, that voice shouldn't happen, and that's what I was trying to prevent.
But that's, we're talking about a defendant here. Are you talking about the defendant?
I'm explaining that defendants have access to their personal records.
Right, but what you, what you just said was, someone went there to Bedford. Who was that person? Was that the defendant?
It was a staff member.
Okay, but this is talking about the defendant, not the staff member.
The previous sentence says, "The superintendent is prohibited from authorizing the use of district personnel records during the sentencing hearing in support of leniency for a convicted sex offender."
Right, I'm talking about the one, two, three, fourth sentence, okay?
Yes, I know.
It said, I'm talking about defendants and their access to personnel records from the district, records. I just want to make it clear that we're not barring people from access to their own records.
Right.
And it seems here that that's, that's a bit confusing.
So my understanding from Mrs. Hoence, and also from my own paying attention to what happened in Bedford, was that in that particular case, another staff member brought the defendant's personnel records to the hearing, and that other person, not the defendant, was reading these glowing recommendations. Now, if the defendant wanted to get her own records, and, you know, have her lawyer read them, or whatever, there's no, legally, that's her right. But I believe Ms. Hoence's objective in this is to prevent another staff member from going and giving glowing reviews from the, from a defendant's personnel records. And also, frankly, I just think that it's good practice not to have staff members necessarily have access to people's records when they're in a criminal hearing.
I'm sure the defendant, or the convicted abuser said, "It's all right", gave her permission.
Right.
So there was some kind of working together to allow that to happen, because they couldn't just take the records and read them, that would have been unwarranted disclosure. So I'm just, again, I'm trying to say what we're prohibiting, and how that's not harmful to their rights. That's all I was trying to make clear.
Right.
And, I'm sorry, just to be clear, you know, people still have their First Amendment rights. If the defendant asks someone to do it, a person can still choose, but I think the point here is that those choices aren't sanctioned by the district, and thus could have repercussions.
Right, but I'm focusing just on, on this sentence here. So I think we should say defendants have access to their personal records from the district. I think we should add that in there. And can readily obtain them for their defense. So I just want to make sure that, that that's clear.
Okay.
And then maybe put a comma there and say, should not, should not receive any additional assistance from the district. I don't even know if we need that. But I just want to make sure that we, you know, all that other stuff, I understand all that, you know? But, but right here, we're talking about defendants and their personnel records.
So...
Okay? And we're saying that we're not, without additional assistance from the district, it looks like it's saying, we're not giving defendants assistance, but then it says additional assistance. But we really should allow people to have access to their own personal records, and we shouldn't confuse that, that issue.
All right. So to make sure that I understand what you're saying, is you would like the paragraph four, because the paragraph three says, "The superintendent won't authorize other employees", and "the superintendent won't authorize other people using the records". And then you want paragraph four to say, "defendants have access to their personnel records from the district and can readily obtain them for their defense", and then, like, period?
Correct. I don't even, I don't even say anything, any changes to paragraph three, you know, I'm just looking at four, I'm just looking at four.
Right, I was just trying to read it in order, so that I understood the gist. Okay. Mr. Kaufman, you've been very patient, thank you.
Thanks, a couple of things. Let me just continue where Mr. Guarino was on this particular sentence, and maybe offer, in the spirit of where he was trying to go, maybe this language will help. "Defendants may have access to their personal records from the district and may readily obtain them for their defense." I don't know if, and I'll let Ms. Hoence chime in on that, if the remaining part, without any additional assistance from the district, is necessary. It just says they have access, and they may obtain them for their defense. So somebody goes in, requests HR, fill out a form, I'm guessing, and it's done. And that's just over-the-counter type assistance is certainly appropriate, but nothing additional. So I just added, I don't know if you want me to repeat what I suggested, I don't know if Mr. Guarino was okay. I'm not trying to change his purpose, I was just, just trying to assist in clarification. And then I had some other comments prior to the, you getting to this particular...
Okay.
Yeah, I don't see how adding the word "may" helps. I think it should be clear that defendants do have access to their personal records. And if you say "may", then they may not, you know, now you're, now you're actually confusing the issue. I think we ought to be straightforward, and we just ought to just say that defendants have access to their personal records, and can readily use them for, for, for defense. Okay? But, you know, you want to say that the district shouldn't add any additional help, you know, that's fine, but I think we need a period there, and then say that afterwards, that the district shall not aid, aid anybody further, or whatever you want to say. But I just think that the way this is written, it confuses the defendants and their access to their personal records.
All right, thank you. I like Mr. Kaufman's suggestion regarding the period after defense, and then, because I think we've now covered that at the beginning, I'm honestly neutral on that "may", I don't, to me, it doesn't make any large difference. So if, I'd like to let Mr. Kaufman move on with his comments.
Thank you. Before Ms. Hoence said it, when you were talking about pulling some of these sentences from the first and second paragraphs, I had the word preamble in mind. So in that regard, to help define, set the table, as it were, so I, as a board member, would think that language would be helpful. The other thing was the actual title of this. This is about the staff prohibition on aiding and abetting, aiding or abetting sexual abuse, correct?
Yes.
It's not about, so would you...
Yeah, and hold students accountable for those kind of decisions.
So my question is, would you want to have the word "staff" as the first word in there? I mean, it's under a G, assuming you end up going with Gs, so it relates to personnel or staff, but clarity is always a good thing. So I just throw that out to you guys to consider, that's all.
Okay.
I got a comment.
Yes, Mr. Mosher, I'm sorry, one second, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Kaufman, did you have anything else?
That was it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mosher.
Yes, I think that we should not put those words "may" into that sentence, because that connotates that you may and you may not. So the fact that the law says that they have access to their personal records, which is a positive statement, that you do have access to your personal records, that's, that is the law. And it's not that you may have it, you do have it. So it's very personal thing there. As far as adding any other words to it, any one of these things, would only be confusing the, the issue. I think it's perfectly clear that the staff shall not get involved in supporting, aiding, or abetting somebody during the sentencing hearings. So I think it's pretty forward and straight, the, that's the way it is.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and the other thing that we're doing is, we're, I would really like this to be run by counsel, and I'll tell you why. Because we're talking about the district and character references for convicted sexual abusers, and then in the third, in the fourth sentence, we're talking about defendants. Defendants are different than convicted people. So I think we ought to be clear about, about that. So I would, I would like to have this, once we do get a, a working policy, and I think we do need a working policy, but I think we ought to run it by counsel, and we ought to specify, okay, there's convicted, people that are convicted during sentencing, you know, and then there's, there's also defendants, so, and defendants aren't convicted people, they might be innocent, and, and I know this is a terrible, this is, this is a terrible thing that's going on in our society, but, and, and I know they had big problems in Bedford, but, but we have to be, I think we should be really cautious and run this by counsel.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. Mrs. Hoence?
Just two responses. For GBAA, Sexual Harassment and Violence, there's a dash, either staff or employees, we could do the same format, just do a dash, and I don't remember if it's staff or employees, but just copy that if you wanted Mr. Kaufman's suggestion, I'm neutral on it. Mr. Guarino's suggestion, the reason why I picked the word defendant is, if I said convicted, then you get access to your personal records early, in the defense, and you have them if you're convicted. So that's why I use the word defendant, because you certainly have it at the beginning of the process, not at the end of the process. So I didn't, I wanted to make that clear, that they have the access early on in the process by using that term.
Thank you, Mrs. Hoence. Just to note, I have the policies here, not all of them, but at least the titles, and GBAA is Sexual Discrimination and Harassment Dash Involving Staff.
So if that involves staff.
Helps anyone with their thought process. Mrs. Porter?
I think this is clear, because there are two parts, as Mrs. Hoence said. So when you're accused of something, you have access to your records to present in your defense. Once you are convicted, at that point, the district is cutting off support in any way. So I think it's clear, the way that it's written, in that respect.
Thank you, Ms. Porter. Did anyone else want to make a comment at this point? Okay. I happen to agree, that I found it clear as well, and frankly, I think when someone is accused of a criminal act and is on trial, they do have, under the law, the benefit of the presumption of innocence until they are convicted. And frankly, as part of their defense or part of the prosecution, staff could be subpoenaed. And I, I'm hesitant to put anything in any kind of policy that would interfere with staff's ability to comply with a subpoena, because that's, that would be against the law. And I think that this policy does a good job of separating those two, of saying, after conviction, when they're sentencing, you know, at that point, staff is not going to give you character references. They can on their own, but we're not going to sanction it. And then, but during the defense, you know, people are free to, you know, testify if they're called. And defendants, of course, have access to their records, and we would never interfere with that. So at this point, I've noted Mr. Guarino's request that I run... So at this point, I've noted Mr. Guarino's request that I run this by the attorney. I am planning on seeing Attorney Bolton in the next couple of weeks, so I'm happy to do that. But I don't think he's going to have a problem with it, given that it's so very similar to the federal law. It's, I would be shocked. And I would, I would suggest that we come up with a final draft and vote to send it to the board, and then if Mr. Bolton has a problem, I'd be happy to bring it back. I don't know that we need a motion for me to say, wait, it wasn't ready yet. Is everyone in agreement on that? Yes? Okay. So what I would be looking for at this point is a motion regarding any changes that we want to make, or accepting it as is. I'm happy to make one myself, if no one else has a motion in their head.
I have one.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Moser.
I accept it as it is.
Okay. Thank you. I'll second it.
I just want some clarification. So those changes that we talked about, when not making those, like getting rid of these sentences?
So right now, Mr. Moser has made a motion to accept it as is. If you wanted to make a motion to amend it, that would be the next step. So we can either vote to accept it as is, or you could make a motion to amend it with some of the changes we discussed, and then we'd vote on that. Mrs. Hoence, have I misspoken?
No, no, no. I just-
Go right ahead.
I wanted, "as is" doesn't have a title, GBAA P, or whatever we're going to call it, and it doesn't have the references back in. So I was hoping that we could amend it to put those two back in, if possible.
Mr. Moser, are you willing to accept a friendly amendment with the letters and the references?
Yes.
Okay, so can we add that to the original motion?
Yes.
Okay. So we have a motion to accept it as presented, adding GBAA dash P, put a question mark there, and the two references, which I wrote down.
Yeah, my other question is, you said you were going to run this by counsel?
I will, and if he has a problem with it, I will bring it back.
Okay.
So I would like to, yeah, I would like to make an amendment regarding paragraph 1, 2, 3, 4, that we discussed at length, to make the changes regarding, so that the paragraph four would read defendants have access to their personal records from the district would be added, and may readily obtain them for their defense, period, which I think is a hybrid of what Mr. Kaufman and Mr. Guarino suggested.
I second that motion.
Okay. Okay. Can we have a vote on that amendment, please?
On the amendment to the 1, 2, 3, 4th paragraph, Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
The amendment carries.
Thank you. All right, so back to the initial motion, to accept the rest of it. Mr. Kaufman?
Porter, I'm just confused what you've done with the amendments, because you didn't vote on the first amendment to accept it, which included the GBAA and the-
It was a friendly amendment.
I apologize, Mr. Kaufman.
Is that going to be included in the motion, the vote you're about to take?
Yes.
Is to include the GBAA and the, what was the other thing, the reference?
The two references, yes. I apologize, I wasn't clear enough.
Didn't want to lose it, that's all.
So the original motion that we're on now is to accept it as presented with the addition of the letters GBAA dash P for the, I don't know, whatever we call those letters at the top, and the two legal references, which I have written down so we can write them down for Jackie for later. I'll read them again. It's NHRS A169C, the Child Protection Act, and 20USC, squiggly line 79.26 ESA, Section 85 dash 46, Prohibition on Aiding and Abetting Sexual Abuse. Okay. Are we ready to vote on that, or did anyone want to make any other amendments regarding language? And I see comments.
I can't make an amendment, but are you doing anything with those two sentences you had in question?
That's what I'm asking right now.
All right.
Okay. Ms. Oden, did I see your hand as well?
No, I have. I'm sorry, I had the same question as Ms. Porter.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mrs. Hoence?
Just a side thing, that USC 7926, I don't know, there's a decimal point in it, so we might want to check, so we get that straight. Whatever, I just have it penciled in. I think my original copy to you is where I pulled it.
Okay. I have that in my email, I had just, I printed it and given it to Tara to distribute, and it didn't come.
Never made it back, okay.
Oh, I apologize.
No, it's all right. Just wanted to double-check, because I don't have the decimal point in there, so it might not be there.
Okay. And, you know, Mr. Google is always helpful with these things as well.
Right, but I, see, I don't think Tara will know whether or not it is, so I think if you check back with the email, it would be better.
All right, I will. I will do my best to make it correct before it goes to the main board.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to propose an amendment, and my amendment is to strike the second sentence of paragraph one, and the second and third sentences of paragraph two.
I'll second. Do you want to vote on the amendment?
Yes, I think we've discussed it at length, unless Mr. Moser has something else he'd like to say.
No, I'm ready.
Okay.
Okay. On the amendment to strike the second sentence on paragraph one and the last two sentences on paragraph two, is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay. Now we're back to the beginning, the original motion to accept it now.
So on the original motion to, is this to accept the policy?
As amended, yes.
As amended.
Right.
And that includes the statute references and the proposed numbering of this?
Hold on one moment, Mrs. Fitzpatrick has her-
Just, excuse me, I want to clarify that if you vote on the policy now as it's presented, it's still going to go to Attorney Bolton to be checked?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. And I will pull it, say it for the record, I will pull it if he has a problem and bring it back to the next policy meeting with whatever feedback he has. But if he says it's good to go, I would, given the nature of it, I don't want to hold it up until next month if he says there's no problems with this. Is that acceptable to everyone?
Yes, to me.
Yes.
Okay, then let's go ahead and vote.
On the, on the motion to accept the policy as amended, Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Motion carries three to zero.
Okay. If you guys can indulge me for a moment, I want to make sure that I have my note to myself, so I don't forget to do that. Okay, the next item on the agenda, the next two, JCA and JFAB are related to each other. JCA is Change of School or Assignment, and JFAB is Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students. So for JCA, you'll notice in your packet that I included some reference material here regarding some changes to RSA 1933, numeral, Roman numeral three, regarding reassignment of pupils. In the past, superintendents were able to work together to reassign pupils from one school district to another. But all the way back in 2015, the law was changed to indicate that school boards must vote in order to make these changes. So we have updated the language of our policy to reflect that change. So there's a number of places where we've changed it. So paragraph one on JCA, we've changed superintendent is authorized to superintendent must request approval from the Board of Education before reassigning a pupil, or before approving a request from another superintendent. For the conditions and procedures, number two, should, when the superintendent shall fully consider the request, shall meet with the parents and the guardians, and then shall present this request to the board to make a decision regarding the reassignment. Number three, the, we put BOE, but the board's decision shall be based on the best interest of the pupil as presented by the superintendent. Number four, the board of ed determines the best interest of the pupil, determines if, I'm sorry, if the board of ed determines that the best interest of the pupil warrant a reassignment, they, the board, may approve reassignment of the pupil. And then in the last sentence, again, we've changed superintendent to board of ed. Number five, the board of ed's reassignment shall be communicated by the superintendent to the parents or guardian and to the SAU in question. And number six, the board of ed, not superintendent, may reverse the decision. And then on the back, under transportation, that sentence was out of date. It was for 2017, 2018, and 2013, 2014 school years, so we have eliminated that paragraph in its entirety. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. I have two just suggestions. In the conditions and procedures for reassignment, you had that numbered list?
Yes.
The third one down, the second sentence, not where the red line is, superintendent may develop administrative regulations concerning the factors, et cetera. The administration makes procedures, they don't make regulations. The board makes policy, the administration does procedures, and sadly, government makes regulations. So I would suggest to the committee that you change the word regulations to procedures, which I think more accurately reflects what actually happens. And then on the reverse side, under transportation, I'm curious about the word "other" in the middle of the sentence. I don't get that, if that's necessary.
All right, hold on one second. So procedures? Oh, you're correct. I don't think we need the word "other" anymore, since we've struck that first paragraph.
Okay.
Mrs. Fitzpatrick?
I agree.
Okay, thank you. She agrees. Any other comments or questions? Okay, if, oh, go ahead, Mr. Guarino.
So we're replacing regulation with procedures, is that it?
Sure.
Okay. I don't have any problem with that.
Okay. If that is the case, then I would be looking for a motion to accept JCA with the following changes. In number three, under conditions and procedures, change the word "regulations" in the second sentence to "procedures." And under transportation, strike the word "other" in front of pupil in the non-red sentence.
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Moser.
I'll second.
I have a clarification question. Where we have BOE, you want it changed to say board.
Does anyone have a feeling about that, one way or the other?
I think that the notation of BOE, you know, it simplifies it, and there's a little bit of saving there on the ink, but it comes out the same way. BOE is Board of Education.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Moser. Mr. Kaufman?
You defined it in your first sentence, so I think it's appropriate.
Okay, then let's keep it.
Just making sure, thank you.
Yep. To say a giant thank you to Mr. Guarino for being the clerk tonight. This is a lot to write down.
Okay, on the motion to accept changes to policy JCA with two changes, word "regulation" procedure to replace "regulation," and striking the word "other." Mr. Moser?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. So as I mentioned earlier, the next policy, JFAB, is Admission of Tuition and Non-Resident Students. This is directly related to the legal changes that I shared with you regarding JCA. So again, we wanted to make sure that our policy reflected the fact that it is the Board of Education that approves or does not approve tuition and non-resident students, and not the superintendent. So on sentence one and paragraph one, we added Board of Education, so it was clear. Struck authorizes the superintendent, added an S to approves, and an S to determines, to make it make sense. And then on paragraph two, we changed the word superintendent to Board of Education. Mr. Kaufman?
Thanks. Just for clarification, I would suggest the Board of Education shall approve the, and everything else stays the same. So the Board of Education, I would then add the word "shall," change approves to approve, and then add the word "the" admission.
I'm wondering if that changes the meaning? Because then would we become required to, or does it take out our choice? I don't know. I'm wondering if "may."
That's true.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
That's true.
Well, it's still based on presentation of information, recommendation from, the parent has to speak to it, the superintendent has to be able to accept the child, the other district has to be able to let them go. I mean, it's not, I see, well, your sentence, the way you have it now, would also imply that the Board of Education approves the admission, so-
Yeah, perhaps we should say "may approve admission," and then it still says in accordance with board policy. Mr. Guarino?
Yeah, I agree. If you put the word "shall" in there, then it requires, it requires the Board of Education to approve admission. The way it is, the board approves admission of tuition, it just gives, it gives the authorization to the board to do that. So I think "shall" changes the definition and the meaning.
What about "may"? Are you comfortable with "may," and then we can strike those two red S's?
I think "may" says the same thing as just approves.
Okay.
The "may approve." Yeah.
May approve.
Yeah. "Shall approve" is different than "may," definitely.
Like "may." Wait, Mrs. Hoence?
Well, the next paragraph uses "may." I'm comfortable with the "may." But I had a question, just curious, the children of non-resident full-time employees may attend on a partial tuition waiver. Is there, I just want to understand, what is a partial tuition waiver? Does anyone know?
Ms. Fitzpatrick? Do you know?
No.
No? Okay. I know of, I know of children in the district whose parents are teachers where they would, instead of attending their homeschool, would attend the parent's school, you know, so that they can actually get there and leave on time and be convenient. But I don't have knowledge off the top of my head if there's any cost associated with that.
I don't want to answer incorrectly, which is why I said I don't know, but I can find out and share that information.
Okay, thank you. And I'm just, I'm just thinking of that student we approved to go to Salem, if Salem accepted them, because their parent worked there, perhaps there's like a discounted rate? I don't know. Mr. Kaufman?
Just a typographical point, if you're interested. There's two bullets toward the bottom of the page. Just to suggest some line spacing above the word "under."
Okay, so you'd like to move it down one line?
Yeah, just, I think it deserves to be bracketed by space. But then, of course, it'll go to a second page, and they'll regret it.
Yeah, that's probably why it's there. All right. So I am looking for a motion to approve JFAB and send it to the full board with the following changes. It should read in the first paragraph, the Board of Education "may," and then strike the two red S's on approves and determines. "approves and determines," so "may approve admission and determine tuition rates," and add a line of space after the second bullet and before the word "under." Would anyone like to make that motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Guarino. I'll second it. Do we have any further discussion, or are we ready to vote? Mr. Mosher? Mr. Mosher, are you with us?
Yes, I am.
Oh, okay.
I'm ready to vote.
Great.
Okay. On the, on the motion to accept and send to the full board changes to policy JFB with changes as stipulated by Ms. Raymond, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero.
Okay. And finally, this evening, in our last eight minutes, is policy JBAR, Sexual Discrimination, Sexual Harassment and Sexual Violence Students Appendix. So this is a policy that, it's not really a policy, it's an appendix, which is why it has the R, that every district in the state is required to have. The updates are to make sure that the names of the people who are Title IX coordinators, who should be contacted if parents wanted to, is correct. So it's updated for this year, because prior to that, it wasn't the correct people. So we want to make sure that if parents are looking at policies, they know who to speak to. And even people within or without the district. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
So I could be wrong, because it's so hard to keep track of them. Kelly Paradise, is she, forgive me, I thought, did she leave? No. Oh, okay. Thank you.
I was going to say, I don't believe so.
So this list reflects the temporary assignments that the superintendent spoke about?
Yes. So you'll notice on...
No.
Oh, no?
This list is the current principals across the district.
Yes.
So none of the interim folks that are helping out in the schools that are hiring assistant principals are part of this list.
Okay. I'm sorry. I misunderstood the question. I thought he was asking about the interim principal at Penachuk. Sorry.
No, he's on here, which makes sense. But, so I'm confused now. These, all of these people work at the school right now, or...
Correct. Yes. So the Title X coordinators are the principals of each school. It wouldn't typically list assistant principals.
Right. Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then you'll notice on the back, we've updated the program coordinator for Brentwood as well. So are there any questions on this one?
Nope.
Okay. Then I'm just going to make the motion. I move that we accept JBAR with the updates that have been provided and read.
So moved.
Okay. On the motion, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries three to zero.
Okay. So that's all I have for this evening. One outstanding matter from the last meeting was policy ILBAS statewide assessments. There were some legal changes. Some of the legal changes happened over the summer, and I was going to chat with Attorney Bolton about that. As soon as I've had that conversation, I'll bring that one back. And then I have a list here. If anybody has other proposals, feel free to email me. I'm continuing to focus on things that we are out of compliance on. Mr. Kaufman?
Could you publish that list? Or could you distribute it to the board, what your pipeline is?
Yeah. I mean, I don't, the pipeline, frankly, is I have printed out our policies from the website, the, each thing, and I'm literally going through them numerically. It's like the most boring thing ever.
Well, I'm asking because I had some previously submitted that haven't seen any action in a while. Do you want me to resubmit them to the committee?
You're welcome to do so. As I've said before, I'm prioritizing district needs. So if we're out of compliance with a law, that is more timely to me than something else, or something that has to do with the immediate health and safety of our students. But absolutely, I'm willing to hear discussion. Go ahead, Mr. Kaufman.
You just said something that reminded me. If I recall correctly, when the shooting happened in Florida, we were looking at our policies. And at the time, we determined that, and I forget exactly which policy it is, was in fact contrary to the New Hampshire state law relative to an adult carrying concealed on the school district property, which is allowable by state law if they have a permit to do so. So I just, I know that was a concern that you had, and when you had, when you said health and safety, it reminded me. So I'd just ask you to put that back onto your list if it isn't already there.
Yeah. I think the last time we discussed that, we had talked about having some forums regarding that. And given the summertime, we didn't schedule forums in the summer, because parents aren't always accessible. So that's on the list of to-dos as well. But I personally, and I think we'll, I'll talk about this further with Mrs. Fitzpatrick, President Oden, and probably Dr. Mosley, about ought we do that during a policy meeting, or ought we schedule special meetings so that the public can participate? Not that they can't participate at a policy meeting, they certainly can, but it's my intuition that the public will have feelings, that they'll want to share with us. And I want to make sure that people have the opportunity to do that.
And it makes sense to make it a single topic meeting.
I agree. Mrs. Hohensie?
I'm confused. I thought we were trying to not give a lot of visibility to the policy and make it accurate. And then the other thing is, if it is a state law, we can't have really a forum and say, do we want to violate it? So I'm trying to understand the goal of that. I thought it was low visibility, and we would make a decision.
Right. It had been until it was in the paper. So it's been in the paper, it's been out on Facebook. The other thing that I will note is, there are districts in New Hampshire who have chosen not to update their policy. So there's no legal consequence for not updating the policy. At this point, I think it's my duty to bring it forward, to have a discussion. I'm hearing from the public that they would like, their voices heard. When you're talking about guns and students, I think that ought to be done. And then the board needs to decide what's best for the district. And in this particular case, I think it ought to be a whole board and not just three people on the policy committee making, I mean, I'll certainly bring whatever recommendations people want to the board, but I think the whole board should have the opportunity to weigh in.
Through the committee process, I mean, you make a recommendation from committee, it still goes to the board for final discussion and approval. So I don't see how the board would be excluded if the committee did the work. It always goes to the board for, we actually get more of a voice for public, because it's...
Agreed. I just, I would anticipate that this would take over a meeting. So I would like to, I would hate to put it forward to the full board on a regular board meeting with a regular agenda, since we already struggle with getting all the agendas, and then have half an hour or 45 minutes of public commentary. I feel like this might need its own meaning. So I think that's where I was going with it. Go ahead, Mrs. Hohensie.
I think we can leave a policy out of sync. I don't think that's a problem. The problem is if we try to enforce one that's not compliant with state law, we have a liability, we could be sued.
Agreed.
And I think if we had a forum, I mean, the only thing we could suggest to the public is go to the state legislature and change it there. I don't think we should give them false assurances that we can do anything here and make a prohibition that we're not allowed to do, or we'll be immediately sued.
I agree.
So I would suggest that we keep a low profile, we decide what we're going to do, and if folks don't like it, Concord is where they need to change things, because we can't incur a liability.
Thank you. Mr. Guarino?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn, because we've come up against seven o'clock, and we have another meeting at seven, I believe.
Seven thirty.
Oh, is it seven thirty?
Seven thirty? Oh, my goodness.
Oh, it's at seven thirty. Well, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn anyways.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. Mosher, would you like to second that?
Yes, I will do that.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. On the motion to adjourn, Mr. Mosher?
Yes.
Ms. Raymond?
Yes.
Mr. Guarino votes yes. Motion carries.
All right. So we are adjourned at 7:01 PM. Thank you.